Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
We will call the meeting of the Liberty County Board of Commissioners to order July 7th, 2020, our first meeting of the month. Mr. Brown, has the meeting been properly advertised?
Yes, sir, it has.
Thank you, sir. I see evidence there. Ms. Parker, good to see you. That's our new Assistant County Administrator, Mr. Joe Mosel. If he would lead us in our invocation and our pledge, please stand for our invocation and our pledge, please.
Let us pray. Gracious God, we are so mindful of your bountiful blessings. We thank you for this day and all that you have done. We ask for your divine wisdom and insight as this body deliberate on the business of this community. Be with them and strengthen them. As we thank you for the powerful and penetrating name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus the Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Prepare for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Getting you more and more broken. Can y'all understand what I'm saying with this mask on?
No, sir.
Oh, okay, alright.
Just don't look to your left or right.
Alright, sir. Have to get a surgical mask next time, man. Alright, our minutes for the month of June would need our approval. Have you had time to review those?
I had to stand on my head and look at them, to be honest with you, but I believe they were pretty good.
Did you?
Yeah.
Whatever it takes, huh? Will you translate that into a motion, please, sir?
Yes, sir. I'll make a motion and through the minutes.
For the month of June. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor of approving the minutes for the month of June, let me raise your right hand, please. Alright, the minutes are approved. Okay. Right on into our new business. We go. We started five minutes late, and I promise we'll make up for it unless somebody gets long-winded tonight, alright? Hospital bond refinancing. Mr. Trey Monroe, Mr. Dave Lucas, hello. Good to see you back in God's country again.
Good to be back there.
Yeah, sure.
Trey could make a trip, and if you don't mind, I'm gonna call him on the phone. He can listen in.
Okay. Good to see the hospital authority chairman, Mr. James Rogers, here. CFO, my penny pinched back there, Mr. Derek Roja. Good to have you guys here. Ms. Mim, still gonna let you know that she would have been here, but we were trying to moderate the number of people in the audience, so she opted out. She left it in the hands of, capable hands of those two gentlemen out there, so.
Okay, I got you on speakerphone, Trey.
Okay, thanks.
I think Joey has already given y'all a summary of the two proposals we've got here, and I'd call your attention to that, but the interest rates, I have to take this off, I'm afraid. Interest rates have gotten to more than historic lows. They're all-time lows. The hospital authority has three issues with an interest rate of 2.82 percent, and they total about $16 million, 500,000. And with the rates where they are now, we think that the current market would be about 1.6 percent. You would save a little over 1 percent, and that would equate to $100,000 a year for the 12 years left. The bonds could actually pay off a year early with a debt service reserve that's in effect. So those savings are significant. It's about 5.5 percent of the issue, which is a very good savings. And the process, we would ask the commission to let us go forward with the help of the county attorney and the hospital's attorney to get it ready to go to market, but we think that we can get it closed in August. The first time these bonds were callable was this coming August. We can't get it closed by then, but we think we can by September the 1st. And that would equate to some savings. Of course, the county guarantees these bonds for the hospital, so by reducing the interest rate, it reduces your exposure. That's the first refunding. The second is on the Public Facilities Authority. When we talked with Kim and Joey, they said anything else we can save, and we looked at all your other issues, and the one issue that you can is on the Justice Center bonds. The original rate was 4.15 percent. In 2017, you reduced it to 2.62 percent. These bonds only go out to 2028, but we think there's savings there of about $75,000 a year or $600,000 over the life. You've already had significant savings from the '17 refunding, but this would help you an additional $600,000 total. But this would not extend any issue. They'd still be paid off on the regular retirement date.
Okay. We hadn't too long talked about the Justice Center, so thank you for raising that question, sir. We just talked about that, yeah.
It's a good-looking facility. I came by it coming in from Macon, and it sure looks nice.
Thank you, sir.
That would be two different.
Yes, sir.
Two different.
Transactions, yes. Right, the hospital authority bond issued under the hospital authority's law of Georgia, and then the Justice Center bonds were issued through the Public Facilities Authority.
I'm gonna ask a question, and I hope it's not too much out of line, and I, with the, with the expansion, Joey and Mr. Chairman, on the fire stations, and we're building those, what, what avenue is left there for us to, I mean, it's gonna take some period of time to, to fund those, and you say that'd be something worth looking at?
Yes, sir. You've actually got documents coming to you to fund the fire station, the island station, the difference between the splash and the pavement there. I want to think that's roughly half a million dollars. The only station that's not funded at this point would be the main station to be designed at Miller Park, and that could be something you may want to strongly consider trying to do something on. We talked a little bit about that. That could possibly be the road department for some of that, but, but yes, sir. We got one.
I just was thinking about that, and, and I know it's not gonna be the last one we build, but I mean, that is not, I'm not a finance guy. I have a real good friend that's a finance guy, and he's sitting back there, so I know that, I know if you can save, you save. Looks like a pretty good situation.
Well, and I might say that interest rates are down. Earlier this year, we looked at it, and rates went back up after the pandemic hit, but they're back down some, and the market's getting more receptive, so this is a good time to look at it. But in '18, interest rates were up. The Federal Reserve did start dropping rates in '19, but they really didn't drop until all of the various stimulus acts came in, and they really didn't drop until, well, I'd say, April, May.
Now, are these fixed rates?
Yes, sir. These would be fixed rates.
Okay.
We had discussed it at the budget.
And you're saying that this is possibly what I'm hearing, Mr. Brown, this is a possible way to get the Miller Station up and going?
Could be. It could be, yes, sir. Of course, they haven't been designed yet, so we don't know what the cost for that might be, designed or bid, and that's probably six months away, you know, getting that designed.
Is it part of the sales tax, the new sales?
It is not, no, sir.
Does that affect the timeline on our, what the, the Justice Center was, what year of sales tax will it?
It, well, it's got eight years left, and so it's paying on this one, and then it'll have to parcel on the next one. That's what we were talking about. The other, the other good thing about these is neither one of these issues, and David noted this here, neither one of these extend the life of the bonds any, so they'll still pay off. In fact, the hospital may pay off early, but it won't extend the Justice Center any longer than it was already planned. And so really, when you think about it, it'll put, over the life of that, you know, it'll give you probably an additional $600,000 of sales tax money for use in other places over that period of time.
That could go water for the station.
I think we all like the sound of that.
Sir?
I think we all like the sound of that.
Yes, sir, I'm sure.
Mr. Chairman, just so I'm clear on this, we're looking at the bonds for the hospital authority and the Justice Center. Is that correct?
Public facilities.
And the refinance of both?
Both of them.
Okay. And the hospital authority obligation is, right now, what we got left, what was the balance?
It's about $16 million, 500,000.
16 million?
Yes, ma'am. And the debt service is about $1 million seven a year. It could drop to $1 million six a year.
Million six?
Per year. We also have $1 million seven debt service reserve, and it's already in the bank on that, too.
Okay. And how many years?
It would go out, the final maturity is 2032, and it could be paid off a year early with that debt service reserve in '31, so 11 years, about 11 years and two months or so.
How many years total was it for going out to '32?
Well, they were actually done in 2004 or '05. The 2012 and '13 refunded that, so they issued these 20-year bonds initially.
Okay.
The Justice Center bonds were issued in '09. I think that was a 25-year issue. It was originally $20 million, 785. When you refinanced in 2017, it was $16 million eight. Now, there's about $12 million seven, so you're paying it down.
Paying it down pretty good. We just started from a big number.
Yes. I just wanted to make sure there were no additions in these prior years.
Alright. So, Joe, we need two separate motions for?
I think it'd be good to do two separate motions.
Okay, alright.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am, ready.
You need to offer up the, first, I would make a motion that we approve the renewing of the hospital authority bond. Do I need to put a number in?
Yes, ma'am. I would say, yeah, if you don't mind, Commissioner.
Give us that, that number.
For the 16 million?
Well, let's, let's say 16 million, 500,000, up to 16 million, 500,000.
Up to 16 million, 500,000.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion? There's a motion and a second before we refinance the hospital bonds up to 16.5 billion dollars. Any further discussion?
At what rate?
We don't have a fixed rate yet. We think it can be done. We'll come back to you with what the actual rate is when it's ready to go to market, but we needed to get your okay to start going to the market to come up with an interest rate.
Okay.
But you'll have the final say in the adoption of the.
Okay, alright.
Okay. This is just to get started?
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright, okay.
Alright.
Alright.
All in favor of the motion as presented, raise your right hand, please. Those opposed? Motion passes, alright. Now, for the Public Facilities Authority or the Justice Center bonds?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. It would move forward with the refinance of the Justice Center.
Okay.
What was the amount on that?
Moving in that direction.
Actually, 12 million, seven.
12 million, seven.
A second?
Okay.
Motion and a second that we approve the refinance. Request for the Justice Center bonds at the stated amount. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Motion passes. Alright.
Anybody hear that online?
That would be watching.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Thank you, sir. We'll see you.
We'll be working with bond counsel, Mr. Davis, to get some drafts of the documents posted on how we're doing.
Alright. So at the very least, we'll see you in September-ish?
August.
August, okay. Alright.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Alright. Capital lease, AmerisBank. I don't see Ms. McGlaughlin, so who's running that?
Ms. McGlaughlin is there. She's just.
No, I didn't recognize. You never sit back there.
No, she's got the round.
And you're not generally masked either. Sitting in the back and masked.
We don't recognize that mask.
Round thing on the mouth.
Do you have a copy of that? Okay. This is actually a resolution that we would need for you to pass and adopt for the financing of the equipment for the road department. There's a truck and a trailer and a very large excavator and a piece of maybe equipment that it pulls. I, I can read it to you.
You're being very technical, Kim.
Yeah, I know. I, I didn't even know. When I first saw it, I asked Clinton, I said, "How big of a truck is this?" And then, you know, he kind of explained to me what it was.
Quick note, I'm sorry, no, quick note. That, this is, has been previously approved by the commission, the purchase of the equipment, and we checked financing rates with those two companies that provide the equipment. They were not as good as we could get locally, so resolution does a local lease instead of going out in the market.
Okay.
Right. But both of the financing were much higher interest rates, so we took those two things to put them together. We're gonna finance all of the equipment, truck, trailer, and excavator, all through AmerisBank. So I can read this, and then they can vote on it. Is that how you want to do this?
Yes, ma'am.
Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Liberty County authorizing the financing of certain capital equipment through a lease-purchase agreement to be entered into with AmerisBank, whereas the Board of Commissioners of Liberty County, as the governing body of Liberty County, Georgia, a political subdivision of the state of Georgia, desires to purchase certain equipment to be owned by the county, and whereas the Board of Commissioners has determined that in order to finance the project, it is in its best interest to accept a term, term sheet dated as of June 30th, 2020 from AmerisBank, Heinzville, Georgia, a copy of which is attached here, too, and enter into a lease-purchase agreement with the bank in the amount not to exceed $339,000 to lease and acquire from the bank the project subject to the terms and conditions to be provided in such agreement, and whereas the county is authorized under the Constitution of the laws of the state of Georgia, in particular, official code of Georgia annotated 36-60-13, to enter into the agreement. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners in meeting assembled that, the Board of Commissioners hereby accepts the financing terms of the bank as provided in the term sheet dated June 30th, 2020, to finance the project. The Board of Commissioners directs its chairman, county administrator, and county attorney to negotiate the terms of the agreement to be entered into with the bank to lease and acquire the project. The execution of the agreement by the chairman and attested by the county administrator as hereby authorized shall be conclusive evidence as of such approval. The chairman, county administrator, and county attorney, and such other officials as may be required are hereby authorized, empowered, and directed to do all such acts and things and to execute all such documents as may be necessary to carry out and comply with the provisions and intent of this resolution. And such officers and/or officials are further authorized to take any and all further actions and execute and deliver any and all other documents and certificates as may be necessary and desirable in connection with the agreement, and the documentation of and compliance with the provisions of all applicable laws in connection with the entering into the agreement. Three, except as specifically provided herein, any and all ordinances or resolutions or parts of ordinances or resolutions in conflict with this resolution shall be and the same hereby are repealed, and this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its adoption, approved and adopted this date, July 7th, 2020.
Just real quickly as a tag along, if you allow me, it's a five-year, supposed to be a five-year lease, principal and interest, quarterly payments, 2.9 percent, tax exempt. So, and it was anticipated in the budget. It's been approved. Clinton anticipated, if you remember, lease payments on this equipment, so we do have the budget to the initial budget.
Did you say 2.9?
Yes, sir.
And you, and you shopped this, and the best, the best deal was found right here in town?
This is the best deal.
Yes, sir. Mr. Right Here in Town, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
We appreciate how the hometown folk work together to the benefit of all. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Alright.
Mr. Chairman, I would.
Go ahead.
Make the motion that we approve the capital purchase agreement with AmerisBank for the lease.
Second.
Motion and a second, we approve the capital lease resolution that's been presented by Ms. McGlaughlin, that we would appreciate the kind services of AmerisBank as it serves our community. Any further discussion? If you're in the, all in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Thank you. Thank you, AmerisBank. Appreciate you.
That is.
I'll, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Oh, there he is. Hello, sir.
Yes, sir. How's everything?
Good. How are you?
Doing well, doing well.
Good, good, good. Now, we're down to item D on the agenda, sir. Resolution for special election e-commerce fulfillment center. While Mr. Davis is coming, let me again thank the public, Liberty County public, for approving T-Splash. I think Mr. Brown said in August we should, am I right?
Actually, it'll start in October.
October. Yeah, but we're looking forward to what T-Splash is gonna do for our county. We couldn't do that as a region, but we did it as a county, and we're Liberty County proud of that. And now, our next mountain to climb is e-commerce. So, Mr. Attorney, would you please walk us through that?
Yes, sir. As you folks might remember, in 2016, the Georgia legislature authorized local governments to exempt a new classification of business inventory, specifically the stock and trade of fulfillment centers. Examples of those include the Amazon expansion in Jacksonville on the Wayfair Center in Chatham County, and most of our competitors in the state of Georgia have approved referendums exempting this inventory, and our county has yet to do that, which puts us at a significant competitive disadvantage with respect to recruitment of industries. And so the board earlier had approved placing a referendum on the ballot in November, and so the resolution you have before you does that. State law requires you folks to notify the Board of Elections and ask that they issue the call for the referendum, and as you may also remember, since this is being done in conjunction with the statewide general election, we're required to give at least 90 days' notice of the special election. That's why we're acting on it now in July rather than waiting closer to the election date. And the election simply does that. It simply requests the Board of Elections to issue the call and provides the notice that's required to be published, as well as the form of the ballot, which is included in Exhibit A. Once the referendum is approved, hopefully by the voters, your next step will be to adopt a resolution actually granting the exemption before years end, and we'll forward that to Department of Revenue, hopefully, and it will take effect January 1 of 2021. And I provided a memo, which has already been distributed to you earlier. We've discussed this before, but if anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions for, Mr. Davis? We had previous discussion, and we also discussed it down at the county workshop with our community partners.
Yes, sir.
And just so you know, there was a very recent prospect in Liberty County, and this came up. This came up, so it's not going away. We're gonna be competitive as a county with our neighboring counties. I'm not talking about with Atlanta. I'm talking about the neighboring counties, and we need to have this as a part of our package deal, so T-Splash was important, and so is e-commerce important to the future of Liberty County when it comes to our economic development.
Yes, sir.
Did I, did I put that all right, sir?
Yes, sir, perfectly.
Thank you, sir. Alright.
One question. We, this says free port tax.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I know we've discussed that a couple times in here. Just clarify something. How many, how many folks in Liberty County right now that's in the industrial park area have, are entitled to free port tax?
Most all, if, actually, many years ago now, Liberty County voters approved a 100% freeport exemption on all, at that time, all three existing classifications of business inventory, and there are different types of inventory, whether you're a manufacturer or distributor. It depends on which exemption you get, but most industries in Liberty County benefit from the current freeport exemption. And many people thought that the existing exemptions would also extend to what are now referred to as fulfillment centers, but the Department of Revenue interpreted the statute differently, so they did not. So in 2016, the legislature responded and created this new classification. And as Chairman rightly noted, most of the industry these days, at least a portion of their inventory or their stock and trade is eligible for exemption under this new fourth classification. And so it's been very difficult with respect to some industries and recruiting to Liberty County, because we have not yet passed this fourth classification of exemption. I know Bryan County has, Chatham County has. Most all of our chief contractors with respect to industrial recruitment has this exemption, but Liberty County does currently have 100% exemption on the existing or the historically reclassifications of abnormal taxation for business personnel.
But if I understand it correctly, the fulfillment centers will not have inventory on the floor as long as?
They try not.
That's right.
These others have inventory in-house. These will be in and out pretty quick.
That's right, and the state, state law provides that exemption is only good for 12 months, so if you have inventory that carries on beyond that, it would not be eligible for exemption under this classification. And, you know, this is also commonly referred to as the e-commerce exemption, and it's because, you know, fulfillment centers are defined as such that orders are placed remotely, typically by email, and they're delivered to a purchaser off-site, you know, not at the distribution center or the performance center. So, again, commonly referred to as the e-commerce exemption, but it's, it's the fourth classification of a level-one freeport exemption under Georgia law.
On this exemptions, is this standard-wide, is this standard procedure statewide, how this one is drafted?
Yes, sir. I think if you'll, I don't know the current, the current numbers, but as of August of 2019, all but eight of Georgia's 159 counties had some form of freeport exemption, and freeport exemption is governed by a state statute, and the code section is cited in the memorandum, but it, it gives the, the authority to grant the exemption to the local governing authority, whether you're a county or municipality, subject to voter approval. So once it's approved by the voters, then yes, you folks have discretion to, to grant the exemption. And the question, as you'll know, in T-Splash and some other referendums we've had, the, the form of the ballot question is stated by statute. That's not true here, so each jurisdiction can state the ballot question a little bit differently, but ours is consistent with what most jurisdictions.
Now, I did hear you say that once approved by the voters.
Yes, sir.
It's been a while since freeport has been put out to the voters.
Yes, sir.
How many years has that been? Can anybody say? How many years?
It's been over 20 years.
Oh, definitely.
30 years?
Over 30 years.
Yes, sir.
Do you think that might would change now if it goes back out to the voters?
I, I can't say. I mean, as the chairman indicated, I think the position of industrial authority, I know at least, is that they would hope it wouldn't change, because a freeport exemption is really an essential tool in recruiting industrial prospects, and without those exemptions, you really are a huge competitive advantage. And I would, I would say that most of our prospects we have now would not have relocated to Liberty County but for our existing freeport exemptions.
And the reason why, the reason why I ask, because I've been asked this question, you know, you're talking about freeport exemption, we got the splash.
Yes, sir.
We got the educational one-cent sales tax. Now, we got T-Splash, you know, and I've just been asked that question, you know, how long has it been since freeport was put out to the, to the voters to at least know what's going on, because there's a lot of people probably is not aware of this freeport and how much percentage it is.
I wouldn't recommend you do that by referendum. You do that by education, as kind of, as Attorney Davis has said, in the state of Georgia, I think it's, I know it's less than 10 counties that don't have freeport, so why would you put yourself in the, against the grain? And it's already a very competitive market out there, so you would really not be doing yourself any justice by becoming one of those that would not have freeport when almost everybody else does.
That's the general consensus of them.
Yeah.
I'm not saying I'm against it, but I'm just bringing forth what was asked to me about it. A lot of people is unaware of that 100% freeport.
It's education.
And, I mean, export, well, at least, we need to educate the citizens on what's going on, not leave them in the dark.
Yes, sir. I completely agree, and I think much like T-Splash, it's gonna be incumbent upon the county in perhaps partnering with the board, with the Chamber of Commerce to further educate the public on the benefits of the freeport exemption, particularly the new fulfillment center exemption that we're discussing tonight. And so I completely agree. Yes, sir. And this resolution does make clear that whether, whether or not the referendum passes, that the existing freeport exemptions will not be revoked or affected in any way. We're just, we're just discussing tonight the expansion of existing.
Right, mm-hmm, okay. Okay. And if we ever get to do town halls again, Commissioner Stevens, we'll put that on our agenda, I'm not sure when that'll happen again, but if we ever get to do town hall, that should be one of those items to be discussed. So, your point's well taken. Point's well taken.
You're our representative on that board, and we have to rely on...
Let me tell you. And I thank you for that. Without it, we would not... We'd be out of the game. We'd be out of the game.
I know in other industrial party meetings, the way most members look at it is you're exempting inventory, which wouldn't be in Liberty County but for exemptions.
Yeah, right.
So, it's a very valuable record.
Mm-hmm. And we have a... What's the word I want to use? We have a checklist that we use to ensure that, you know, the county is always benefiting, the county is the benefactor. Yes, you know, we'd like to have the industrial partners come, we want to make sure at the end of the day that our citizens, Commissioner, not take advantage of, and that Liberty County itself is a benefactor of those persons located in our communities. So, we're very careful with that. Even though we're competitive, we don't want to give away the... Give away the house, if I may say. You know? We make sure that we're competitive.
If any other questions, I'll just ask that the board adopt the resolution presented this evening.
Chairman, do you entertain a motion?
I will, sir.
I will make a motion, and we move forward and adopt the resolution.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second, thank you, that we adopt the resolution to put e-commerce on the ballot in November. Any further discussion? I guess my not discussion, but remind me, have we talked about... And everything, the new norm has changed everything. You know, with T-Splosh, we were able to go a little bit around the county and promote, but...
In fact, I just made a note to marketing plan.
Yeah, we need a marketing plan.
Kind of pull together, you know, the group that you mentioned and/or others.
Yeah.
Private sector.
We need a marketing plan. To help those folk understand, Commissioner Stevens. All right. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. All right? It passes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Would you like me to update on the other real estate issue or not?
Mid-month.
Okay, yes.
Mid-month. Come with your full report, sir. All right. Masking policy.
Yes, sir.
Put mine on while you talk.
Well, actually, I was asking Mr. Davis, I think policy is probably misleading a little bit. I put it on there, you'd ask for it to be put on there, Mr. Chairman, about the masking ordinance, actually. As you know, we had the conversation in one of our updates about a possible ordinance to be enacted similar to Savannah. And what they've done, I do know that the city of Heinzville has addressed the issue and is scheduled to have a meeting this Thursday to address it even further. And digging into that a little bit, I think some bullet points, takeaways that they're considering and still hashing through would basically put a city ordinance in effect for businesses, for people to be masked, as long as they were inside of establishments, inside of buildings. It would be the responsibility of the business owner to make sure that all patrons were masked. This would apply to all types of businesses, including restaurants, retail stores. It would not require masking under certain situations outside, mainly if social distancing was practiced. But in situations where it couldn't be practiced, it would require some masking also, which is very similar to Savannah, city of Savannah and what they've done. It also would go to some extent to give some activities that were okay to participate in outside without masking, even inside the six-foot distancing level, which was exercise, and it's all outdoor activities. So, while I haven't been privy to see exactly a draft of what they're looking at, we can certainly try to get one after they talk about it Thursday, but that's the reason it's on the agenda for discussion.
Okay. You want to add something to that, sir?
Yes, sir. Other than if you'd like, I'll be happy to review the city of Heinzville's ordinance, because I know it's been important, you know, with respect to both the county and the municipalities to work in concert with one another and to ensure that our ordinances are consistent with one another, at least with respect to the current public health emergency. So, I'll be happy to review that on behalf of the county in anticipation of...
I'll just add to that, in our last Wednesday's COVID update, let's see, Mayor Baker was here and Mayor Hawkins was online. I think just those two at that time. Yeah. And we discussed this with them, if they'd be willing... And we knew Heinzville was getting ready to discuss it, if they thought that their respective cities were joining with a countywide policy that's consistent so that citizens wouldn't have to try to decide who's on and who's off, that kind of thing. And they both felt reassured that their cities would participate. So, we're just waiting now. I thought maybe we would have something today. I know Commissioner Gill, you talked to me a little bit about the way Heinzville was headed. So, I guess as... Since we're together now as commissioners, I would certainly highly suggest, I mean, you all see the news like I do. If you hadn't, you've missed that Georgia's now one of those states where it's spiking again, so certainly want to keep our community as safe as possible. So, I would love to know that our community was being compliant. So, if there are in any public area businesses, as you said, that we would also join the policy to ask for masking. So, if you are adversely against it, I guess let me know now, because I don't want to get out there and then find out that my commission does not support.
I don't support.
Don't support it.
I do not support. I think it should be up to the individual whether they want a mask or not. And, you know, there are some issues. I mean, I think we may see numbers start to go down now that the health department is slowing down, and you have to make an appointment. Adversity is slowing down, and you have to make appointments there, whereas before we were having drive-throughs and they were doing them daily, and we're going to start seeing that slowdown. I think our numbers are slowing down. They may or may not. I know Georgia is spiking, but I think it's up to the individual person whether they want to wear a mask or not, whether they're inside or outside. As a business owner, I... You know, how... If you... You know, you can't come in here unless you've got a mask on. And we've seen, you know, positives and negatives of how people react when you try to tell them that they have to have a mask to come into your business. So, I am totally against us as a commissioner. I would not be in support of that at this time. I just don't think it's right, you know, for me to sit up here. And I've had some calls, evidently, they've seen our agenda, they're not in the audience, but I've had some calls, texts of some of my constituents that are not in support of it, and would not be in support of it.
I would say that I'm interested to hear comment from the governor's office. I know there was a conference call scheduled today with County official. I don't know if he spoke to that issue.
If it's statewide, but as a county, you know, let the city do what they want. I'm not a city commissioner, I'm a county commissioner. Let them do what they want to do over there. I was in Florida this past weekend, and, you know, it was told to mask. When you get in a restaurant, everybody's got their mask off, you know? So, what are you doing here? You know, you're told to mask up, go get out the car, walk to the restroom, get in there, and everybody's got their... You know, it's... So, it's... I think the social distancing part of it is working, but I'm not so clear about... Sure about masks. That's just my thought on it.
From a legal perspective, there are, I think, two important things to consider. The first is whether or not this is permitted under the governor's executive order. Now, you know, Savannah has it interpreted in such a way that they say that it is. The governor's executive order, the wearing of mask is permissive. He just encourages people to wear the mask.
That's right.
Savannah has taken the additional step of mandating the wearing of mask. And the governor's order is fairly broad. It basically says any local emergency ordinance, which is inconsistent with his executive order, is not permitted. And he defines that inconsistency to include anything which is more or less restrictive. So, I think the city of Savannah has said, well, it's not more or less restrictive, it's just in furtherance of his... The encouragement that he's given to public, you know, where or not that's, you know, correct interpretation or not remains to be seen. But I am curious, and I hope the governor would comment and just confirm whether or not, in his opinion, local ordinances such as Savannah's are consistent or not with his executive order. That would be very helpful. And assuming that he says it is consistent, then I think it is possible to draft a practical and workable ordinance that addresses many of the concerns that people have. I've taken a look at Savannah's, and perhaps it can be improved upon. But those are the two challenges legally, I think. One is ensuring that it is consistent with the executive orders of the governor, and secondly, make sure it is effective, but also practical and workable.
Mr. Chair. What I got... Mr. Brown, did you listen to the... What I got out of what the governor said today was more or less, you sum it up, is try to educate, because making it mandate, you're putting more pressure on law enforcement and everyone else. And then when you put the pressure on law enforcement, that's taking them away from doing other duties that they need to do. And what is the fine going to be? If there's a fine, you... They write the ticket. Where does it go? magistrate coat. It gets the magistrate coat, and you have magistrate coat in Liberty County is a joke. So, why do it?
That was a concern too, that I had, who is going to be policing it if you don't? And the other thing, there are folks out there with health issues who have problems breathing through some of those masks, you know, respiratory issues or medical conditions, not... They don't have COVID, but they have other respiratory conditions, and these masks are very irritating to them. So, you're saying you can't go to the grocery store because you can't wear your mask? I just don't think that's something that we need to be doing.
Well, I think an important part of considering this sort of ordinance is having our local health officials on the importance of mask and their effectiveness, and then let you folks take that in consideration and hope the governor will have commented by then, and you can make...
And who's going to police it? You have to have the sheriff's department, police department on board, you know? I think those who want to wear them, that they need to wear them, they're going to wear them.
Kelly, how long before you can put that, a draft or something together?
I can do it quickly. You know, I do want to partner with the city to make sure that we're consistent, but I would say by the end of this week, we could do it.
Yeah, I think if... And I'm in favor. I am in favor. I think a combination of, again, what the governor says, a combination of what Savannah is doing, and of course, we could look at Heinzville, but what I think we can... That we should put together one that's strong enough, and in the beginning, relaxed enough, that not everybody that's outside without a mask goes to prison, nothing that extreme. But I think the way the numbers are spiking, I think that it's imperative that people wear masks when they're out in public. And in the businesses, if you have... If you go inside a grocery store, that the management of the grocery store, they would supervise that. I mean, the police is not going to be in there going down the meat aisle to see if someone coming from behind them. He's not going to do that. But out in public, I think they can see that. And you don't... And you just... You give them a mask. I think that's what they do in Savannah, and remind them you need to wear a mask. We do... We've been doing it on my job for three months. And, you know, it's our policy that we wear. And if I see someone without it, I don't fire them, I don't write them up, I remind them. And it's to the point now, that we've been doing that for a while, that we are at 100% all the time, because they understand.
I think his mic went out. Unless he moved. Gary. Gary, tap your mic. You moved back from your mic. You did move back from it, unless it went off?
Well, you bring up a good point. If you folks remember, before the governor's executive order superseded our local emergency ordinance, our approach to enforcement really was one of education. You know, neither the sheriff nor the Board of Commissioners was interested in taking punitive action against citizens. Our approach really was educational. And only in the most egregious, you know, instances of violation would a fine be imposed or would businesses be adversely affected. So, our approach really is educational, it's cooperative, and not like perhaps some other jurisdictions quite as punitive. So, that's been our approach all along.
Well, and if you talk about who's going to enforce it, Heinzville is the largest city, they have the largest police force, and the majority of the people would be out in public in Heinzville, you know, unincorporated area of the county. And, you know, we see... I don't think the enforcement of it is that big of a deal. I don't think that we need to not do it because of wondering how...
You're not doing it, don't enforce it, they might do it.
But with the health and safety of the community, I think that this commission, as elected leaders, I think that we need to mandate policy of wearing masks and a coat. And if we can get the several municipalities to come along, we are only really responsible for the unincorporated area. But if seven cities come on board, I think we can at least have that here in Liberty County. And that's just my vote.
You know, and I appreciate your discussion on that, but, you know, even today, I rode by less than a county employee working out on the road crew, picking up trash, you know? And he had one of those masks on, and I said, you know, today was a cool day, but we're going through the heat of the summer, and then we've already mandated, I guess, our county employees wear masks. He had a mask on and out there picking up trash. And I don't know for how long. I mean, I was just going by on the highway, you know? And I... And I know you guys are wearing them too, Commissioner Gilliam, but I...
Well, you know, my guy, you know, behind us, what we consider what we call the business end of a box truck.
Yeah, with a mask.
With the asphalt and the exhaust coming off that truck. They're wearing masks because they know it's policy, maybe that's number one, but they also, they know their importance, of distancing and wearing masks and sanitizing and all the things, which is all we have, which are policies and recommendations from the CDC, universal, that's all we have, and the actions of that team. So, if distancing works, why not do it? If sanitizing works, why not sanitize? If wearing masks works, why not wear masks? And I think that's what we should do.
Well, I'll contact the Heinzville City Attorney tomorrow to begin work to produce an ordinance that both jurisdictions can adopt, you know, to the extent that we're able under existing law and to the extent that both bodies want to. So, I'll be happy to do that, and we should have it ready for review at the end of this week.
Mr. Chairman, I'll say Joe, he's doing some heavy penmanship out there. He's writing, so... I've listened to my fellow commissioners, and I've got all the respect in the world for everybody up here in this room. And I know that one thing we can do is go away from here tonight and not say nothing. But I think we need to, you being the chairman and us that's up here, say that we highly encourage the citizens in this county to do this. I mean, if they don't want to, you can't make them. But I can remember when we all didn't want to put a seatbelt on, but we encouraged everybody to wear them, and then now it's a state law. And it saves lives. We know that this pandemic, this coronavirus kills people. And sometimes, if a mask might help, that's one thing. But the easiest thing for us to do is leave from here tonight and just say, okay, we talked about it. But I think the board should tonight highly encourage the citizens, when they're out and around, to put a mask on. And it's liable to be 90 days, and it becomes some type of a mandate, but I just... I would hope not. But it's hard for me to drive by the hospital in the morning and see you when you get stopped. That's the first thing you put on. And I understand that, and it's just like Commissioner Gillard. And I understand Ms. Ritz, I mean, she's got people that's walking in from all different walks of life, military, doctors, lawyers, and whatever, and they want their car working on it. Last thing they want to hear when their car's on their back of a rollback, before you come in here, you got to put a mask on. But I think we can encourage the citizens in Liberty County to mask that until further notice, we just going to encourage our employees to continue to mask. And I mean, I don't. I don't put one on every day, but if I go in the store, I've got one on. I mean, I just, I'm going to do it.
There's a sign up there.
You go to the doctor's office in Savannah before you walk, get out of your truck. You're going to have one on it, so...
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I concur with Commissioner Wallen and what he's saying, and that boils down to what more or less the governor said.
more or less the governor said.
Mr. Chair.
Educate them, try to educate.
Just one minute, we'll let you answer.
What he's saying is encourage. When you say mandate, mandate, you have to supply. I mean, some people will go out and purchase their own, but when you say mandate, then you have to supply.
You have to.
So I would go down to Commissioner Wallen more than anything else to say encourage and educate.
I agree.
All right, now, let's try that.
Commissioner Fraser.
Go ahead, sir.
Hello? Mr. Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. I, I just wanted to quickly make my point about this, and, and I agree with all the, all of my fellow commissioners. I think if, if we strongly encourage and lead by example, that'd be enough. If, if we can focus on, on our buildings that, that we have authority over and lead by that, I, I think that, that'd be a, a, a great start. But I, I am against to make sure that, that we have some type of, of, you know, countywide ordinance about that, where, you know, the police have to get involved and everything else. But, but I, I do strongly encourage that, that we do figure out some type of way to, and, and, and we could also encourage by doing social media, you know, and videos and everything else, to encourage people to, to, to wear their mask. Just, just like I do with, with my business, you know, I strongly encourage or I, I mandate people wearing masks in my business. But, you know, I, I, I just don't want it to be a point where, you know, a, a police officer or sheriff deputy sees someone walking down the street and, and they're not wearing a mask, that they, they, they stop them for that.
Right.
And I'm, and I, I know it's probably loud where I'm at, but I, I just wanted to make, make that statement, you know? Let, let's just, let's just focus on strongly encouraging people to, to, to wear their masks. And, and I, I think that's, that's where, from, from a government entity, I think that's where we need to start. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sounds like you had a, in, in one mindset is that you, you bring us back. And I'm just wondering, is there anything more we'll hear from the governor by the end of the week? Probably not.
Yes, sir, and I concur 100% with Commissioner Stevens. He, he did not directly address the ability for local governments to enact ordinances. Was very careful to kind of go around that and did exactly what Commissioner Stevens said.
So Mr. Quick, Commissioner. I just had one question. So it is man, mandatory that the county employees in a building wear a mask?
That's correct.
So you provide them if they don't have
If they don't, and it's under
In this, in all the county offices?
Yes, ma'am, and it's under the policy y'all looked at.
But not the road department employees?
The road department has to do it, I made a note. The road department has to do it while they're inside.
Inside.
Outside, they do not.
Outside, they do not. He had one.
Correct.
Rest his little heart.
If he's outside by himself, he does not need, if he's outdoor, if he's, if he's, if he can, if he's social distanced outdoors
He's by himself.
Then he does not have to. He has to, correct.
Right.
It specifically, if you remember, it specifically addresses vehicles. And so no matter what the size of the vehicle, because it's recirculating the air in that environment, they have to mask.
Okay.
They would need to be masked. That's correct.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
If I may, I know it's probably not in order, but I noticed that we have Mayor Pro Temp love it out there from Worthville. Will you carry this back to y'all meeting and take it up for discussion? Also, since, since you are here, I don't know if you were just here or were you representing Worthville, but glad to see you, but this is what we're dealing with, you know, from within the county. And all of the help that we can receive would be highly appreciated, you know? Yeah.
Right.
Right.
You got a mask. Which is what, which is what the county's doing, for those people that come into
That later on, yes, sir.
Now, now, coming from, coming from the world of healthcare, I'm, I'm more with Commissioner Gillid, you know, and, and I'm just gonna tell you, I am, I told this one today, I really thought coming into this whole COVID thing that by September, it'd be, it'd be behind us, but it is not. It's not going anywhere.
They open up too quick.
And we may as well get used to it. So I'm of the mindset, whatever takes to keep people safe, and so my heart goes out to, now, of course, we see now a lot of young people because of the socialization, their numbers are going up, and you're right, additional testing is catching more people, but I'm also concerned about those young people who go back to visit grandma and grandpas.
Right.
So, you know, young people and old people, my heart, you know, that's my heart. So I'm scared, I'm just telling you, I'm scared. So if it takes being hard, you know, to, to contain it, then I'm willing to be hard. I'm willing to be hard.
Where do old people fit in that?
Golden years, golden years. But I, but, I'm coming to you, but it seems that, that the general consensus seems to be here to strongly encourage us versus mandate, but I would not have a problem with mandating, I really would not, just based on what I see, of course, on, and I, I'll go ahead and tell you this, maybe giving out, there's been some recent exposures that we happen to, what do they call it? Trace, I use the word trace, track, that's, that's track. And that's a little bit difficult, people don't wanna say where they've been, you know, all those kind of things. So that's making it harder to contain what we're going through. So I, I'm very concerned, I'm very concerned, I'm highly concerned, I'm highly concerned. And it's kind of like they teach school teachers, you know, when the school first start, be tough on your class, then ease up as the school year goes along. You know, Georgia's one of those states that reopened a little soon, a little quick. And then, of course, now summer's here and all that goes along with it, I understand. But I, I'm just gonna tell you, I'm gonna come out and just say, this scares me, it concerns me, it really concerns me. Yes, sir, Commissioner Gill.
Well, you know, just, just the fact that we are talking about and as I say, there's a lot of things out there. The only thing that we have that can somewhat even pay on those precautions. And one of those precautions is wearing a mask. And, you know, and it's not flipping the clock that people wear it today or tomorrow, if it's wearing a mask, it's another secondary audit, masking, it's a mask. That in and of itself should be more than enough reason for everybody to do that. Like I said, the guys that work, they, they do it on the job. Maybe because of the community response. But I'm not going around, again, you know, trying to speak about, I'm reminding it and putting it off. You know, and they get all the career opportunities. Hopefully, because of the importance of it, they turn it on to their personal. But when schools shut down because of the virus, businesses shut down, we had to make serious adjustments here, government, local government, all of the things that we did was because of this virus. And the, and all the things that seemed to work were the three things that we talked about, washing and hiding, wearing masks, and avoiding all the crowds that this So I, I just thought to say, why don't you look?
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. All right. Yes, sir, you made the, you made the bring us two proposals. Yes, sir. And we just let the democratic process take care of itself? All right. All right, sir. Got your marching orders? Thank you, sir. Good discussion, good discussion, it's because we care, it's because we care. Contract Civic Plus.
Mr. Stanley's actually gonna come down and address that. Mr. Chairman, we have, have budgeted this year to replace our website. Civics Plus is one that Mr. Stanley will address, that, that department heads have looked at, we've, we've been through, we shopped a couple, and this is our recommendation to do that, that we execute contract tonight. It's in the budget for this year.
It's in the budget, and this is a three-year contract with Civic Plus, which is the web hosting company that the city of Heinzville, city of Savannah, and some others around us use. It's a budgeted expense for $23,131 a year for the next three years. And then a maintenance fee of 3% for any years that we choose to continue with them after that. About $12,000 a year after that.
What was that price?
Twenty-three thousand, one thirty-one a year, for three years.
Now, being a novice at this whole IT thing, hearing you say that the city of Heinzville has this, would there be some, some opportunity where we might collaborate by having the same, or just a matter of they're, they've kind of debugged it before we get it?
Well, I, I mean, certainly may be some opportunity for collaboration, but you, unless we wanna combine with them, I wouldn't suggest, not because of Heinzville, Liberty County, whatever, but just having a combined website and not being consolidated government, I'm not sure I would do that. It, it is not a new company, it's one that comes highly recommended, is probably one of the tops in the country, as a matter of fact. It's very flexible for use. One issue for us is we don't really have a webmaster that goes on there. Clint works hard to do what he can do through IT for postings and everything, but it really comes down to departments updating their websites. The one we've got is not as user-friendly, to be able to go in there and put posts on, as Civics Plus. And so that's one thing we also shopped too, was the ability to go in there and update the sites, put minutes on, do all we have to do for social media now. This is definitely a, a much better site.
Okay.
This also will include online applications, online processing, and a completely new web, website design.
Which we will want to bring back some opportunities for y'all to look at. We wanna photo run that probably in the mid-month sometime and let y'all look and say, yeah, we kind of like that, or nah, we don't like that one, we like this one better, as we do the design.
Mr. Brown, this may not be the right time, I'm always awful ass anyway. Join you and Clint. Will y'all have, will we, the county have the, what'd you say, the copyright on this website? Mr. Brown, you know what I'm talking about roughly? What happened here about a couple, a couple of weeks ago, it was an organization using the, the county's front page, more or less, saying that they were creating a, a list to have somebody removed from office? Brown, you aware of what I'm talking?
I am, and so, and so a couple of different things. In the, in the software realm, we will retain, we'll have ownership of all the material we put on there.
Okay.
Now, the actual software that's embedded that creates the site, of course, is proprietary to them, but we probably need to take a second step in that and go in there and actually do a copyright of our design.
Okay.
So that it can't be used by anybody else in that, and that's something we'll work with the county attorney on.
Okay.
I take that very serious because it made it look like the board of commissioners was behind this issue, you know? Yeah.
Yes, sir. I'll follow up on that with the county attorney so that he can address that too.
All right, thank you.
Keeping the information current, Clint, I'm, I'm just going on things that I've tried to, you know, go to and navigate. And I, I see so many things on there that's completely, totally out of date.
Yes, sir.
And I know that they, some of them don't report to this board, but, I mean, I don't know who's gonna police it to make sure it's all up to date, but we need to make sure that those folks that, and a website's great, if it's, if it's, is number one, user-friendly and you can trust what you read, but there's a lot of stuff that was on there, we just couldn't get any, any information on. Some of it would be as much as two and three years old, so. I mean, I ain't got a bit of a problem spending the money for it if it's gonna be maintained properly.
Yes, sir.
I don't know who's gonna maintain it. I'm talking about who's gonna police it, as we talked about earlier.
Yeah, that's, that's a problem, especially for those departments, we don't, that don't come under the commission.
Right, but the other folks, who's gonna be looking at it every, you know, eight to 10 months to say, okay, this is completely, totally out of line? When you wanna read your minutes, you wanna make sure the minutes is in there, and they're all up to date, so I just
Good point.
Just don't be buying something just because it looks pretty again.
Yeah.
And so, and so we had two options, real quick, we had two options. One was to do with our current provider, what was called a refresh, which was a new look, but it wouldn't change the inner workings of the system, which, for the money we were gonna have to spend for that, we were due for a refresh, wasn't worth trying to do that versus trying to go ahead and get
That's the $9,000, and then the other was 13 annual? Is that what I'm seeing on the chart, the payments?
Thirteen's for the website, the 9,000 is for the human resources portion of the website, which is online app.
Okay, so they're, it's total, okay, so it'd be about 24
Twenty-three.
Uh, annually for the first year.
First three years.
First three years. Okay.
The one we were with did not have the human resource component.
Is that where you list jobs and they can apply online?
Yes, ma'am, and so
And then their benefits?
Right.
Okay, okay.
Right now, we had, we have no way for anybody to submit applications online, they have to come in, get an application, fill it out, and bring it back into the commissioner's office.
We're really behind, aren't we?
The other thing, it provides a link, an easier link to Indeed and some of the online things, which is really where all of our hits are coming from now.
Yeah.
So it provides us an easy link to hook up to that, too. The other one does not.
Chairman, take a motion.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Make a motion, we approve the contract with, is it Contract Civic Plus?
Uh, yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in seconds, two seconds, we approved this, obviously we needed
Get her done.
For the discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. He's in his budget, you're good, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Dan.
Thank you for what you do, too. Workers' Comp Resolution.
Yes, sir, ACCG contacted us. We, we were actually looking over who was covered by our workers' comp line, and you may remember, we went back and covered some volunteers, volunteer firefighters, we amended the ACCG workers' comp agreement to do that. One group that was left out at the time was what we call our CERT team, which is our EMA Community Emergency Response Team, and we do use them during emergencies. They are involved in helping to load buses and things like that. So this just provides coverage for them in case they're injured. And that is a very defined team, they go through training and everything to help that, so we do, we do control, hate that word, but we, we do monitor who comes in, make sure they're certified, some of those type things, so it's not just anybody volunteers gets to walk in and do it.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Brown?
I'm starting.
No?
Mr. Brown.
Yes, sir.
Uh, how many, roughly, would, would it be about 12? How many people?
Ten to 12.
In the 12?
Yes, sir, what I recall, right now.
And they will only be covered when they are put into action?
That's correct, they would only be covered when they're working for EMA.
Okay.
Okay.
What duties do they perform?
So, for instance, Bob Dodd, who's the ESF transportation coordinator over there, trains those folks to help him get people on buses for transportation out when they're doing the evacuation and the they're actually staged at the point there to help people load and unload. Just, just one example. They may, some of these folks are also trained during disasters, they can come into the EOC to help answer phone calls, we actually used them a couple of years ago to do that.
Dublin, or somewhere.
Yes, sir, that's exactly
I don't know where they go now, if something happens.
No, sir, they wouldn't travel with them, but they're at the staging site, because there's so many people, either helping with parking or direct loading of elderly folks onto the bus, with luggage, whatever it might be, they got with them. They work under the, work under the direction of somebody that's there full-time there.
Commissioner Walden, did I hear you, sir?
Yes, sir. Make a motion, we adopt the resolution for
Motion in second, we adopt the resolution of workers' comp for our CERT team. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Those opposed? All right. Midway has to have a special election.
They do, had a councilman that stepped down. I don't have the, it's the exact I don't have the, it's the exact agreement, Kelly knows we're working on it now, but it's the exact agreement we've used before, 100% reimbursable for conducting the election, and we would just ask for you to approve, for the Board of Elections to do that.
And the election is, will be scheduled for November.
It's in November, yes, sir.
So it'll be with the...
Ms. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the agreement for Midway's special election.
Okay. Motion in second, we approve the agreement, working with our sister, well, not sister city, with our municipal partner, Midway. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, please. We will work with Midway with that special election, replace Mr. Gerald Lee, he and Dr. Lee are going back to the Fayetteville, Georgia area.
And actually, now that you mention it, Ms. Chairman, it is, and with that other election, it probably won't be any extra expenses.
Yeah, already.
If we have a charge for uploading a different ballot, that would probably be the only...
Okay, all right, thanks, sir. Administrative report.
Yes, sir, I'm getting Mr. Stanley to cue that up for me real quickly, run down that. And the, Clint, next slide, please. On the Capitol projects, I just wanted to update you a little bit, I'll run through this real quickly. A couple of pictures of the fire station, we had that inspection today. Everything's going well there, the generator's been set. You can see they're starting with some interior finishes that are on the, on there. Once the metal got here, everything's good, so they're all on schedule. They're on schedule to do a final walkthrough before October ends, so the building could be turned over to us by the first part of November. So all is well there, no material delays that we see, everything's pretty much in hand. This week, they anticipate finishing the studs and everything that go in there, and so they can start with the rough end plumbing and finish the electrical. We'll start sheet rock, probably, hopefully get the rest of the roof on in the next two weeks and start sheet rock right after that.
Okay, yeah.
All is good there. Clint, next slide, please. I'm sorry, I couldn't flip it. Just real quickly, on the teesplash that it passed, just some work ahead items now. As you know, we got about $38 million anticipated in revenue. The 30% set aside projects, about 10 and a half, the remainder 26 median gets split. And I did mention collections begin October 1st, so again, our check will probably flow in here sometime around mid-November. I just want to let you know that on the 30% projects, some of the Hampton Technical Committee members, I pulled them together this past week to really give the governing agencies maybe some guidance or some suggestions on prioritization of those projects. In order to do that, I've reached out to the district engineer to schedule a conference call to see which of those projects the state already has an interest in. So there may be some state funds already tied up in the next two or three years for one project that's a fast track moving for them. If you remember, those 30% projects are all on state route, okay? So they touch the route, here's, I'll be real quick, perfect, for instance, you're aware that the 84 Safety Enhancement Project is going to come in in the next two to three years and put a median down Highway 84, and we gave a brief on that. So all these touch, those intersections touch that project. So in trying to line these up with that timeline, it could actually be that some of these may be improved at the same time that project moves through, and so some of these costs that we anticipated for the project could be a little less if we can incorporate it with the state project. So those are kind of things, we're working to give you some options as chief elected officials and governing boards, a recommendation on prioritization of those 30% projects. So trying to line that up with the district engineer.
Mr. Brown, back, what, did you say this now, in about five years, they could come back and put a center, medium on 84 all the way down?
So the 84 safety project that's funded is just in the, in the city of Heinzville right now, and it runs out there from about where Chick-fil-A is, all the way down to tie into the Flemington Curve Project.
Okay.
So the median project that runs from I-95 all the way to the Long County Line, through Walta Ville, as a matter of fact, is just in concept, there's no funding for that project right now that exists. Now, there's some pieces of it, Butler Avenue intersection through there, the piece from Louis Fraser Road all the way to Bakentown Road, enhancements down at I-95, all fit into that. Those would do a median in those sections.
Okay.
So when you look at it, what would be remaining won't be near as much as when you started. These little, these 30% will hit some of those.
Okay.
Be good. So I just wanted you to know, we're working, already working on that.
And we lobbying DOT hard.
Because you know...
Part of that is to buy them in.
Well, yeah.
Because if you all remember, this is something I've been asking for, for about five years, part of it.
We've been telling DOT, and you already heard me make my speech, listen, this is Liberty County, we put our money where our mouth is, we put some skin in the game, so don't put us to the back of the line. Don't put us to the back of the line. They've been very receptive, they give us great accolades for being a county that does good planning, so be proud of your LCPC, and also being progressive, and they like the way we get along as municipalities and the county, they tell us that all the time, so that works in our favor. And of course, having Mr. McDonald up there is another asset, and Representative Williams, and we're pretty good friends with Ann Purcell, so we hoping all that's going to work in our favor, but just know that those things, they just don't happen fast.
No.
Even, even when you're doing well, it takes...
For five years.
Takes time, yeah. Five will be before you know it.
Oh, five years I've been asking, oh.
The other part of the takeaway here is y'all's money this year.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that'll come in, y'all will need to have some planning time...
Yes, we do.
About how y'all want to give that money.
That's the 26 million.
And that will, actually, it's a portion of the 26.
Yeah, because the municipality gets some.
Right. It'll be actually about 40.2% of that.
Yeah.
If I remember.
We need some, okay.
Next slide, please, Clint. The other, the other couple Capitol things to catch up with, that Joseph and I've been working on. First, you awarded a contract for the construction of an ambulance, B.C., before COVID. And so, it had a 90-day delivery time. Unfortunately, the manufacturer closed down, and so we're shopping that again. That's on the street right now, and in fact, what we'll do is shop two, because it's time to buy another one, and the lead time that we're going to see, a little, little bit of uncertainty is that the chassis. So nobody, no manufacturer, custom box manufacturer is going to guarantee you any chassis delivery time on any model you buy right now, but what they will guarantee you is that once they get the chassis in hand, they'll have a turnaround time for you. So with, some of the plants, we're not doing Fords, we're doing Dodges, I'm not sure how they were affected by COVID, but we'll find out. So those are on the street for you, and they're due back in the middle of July.
I seen a dog, Julie, they didn't have a mask on.
Had a, had a, had a... The other two things that are happening is, you may remember me telling you that the HVAC system, heating and air system at the Eastern Complex for the main room had gone out, we've been having to use temporary air in there for the elections. So we put that proposal on the street one time and got no takers. We've done some modification of that and talked with a couple of folks, and we believe we'll have some, some options this time. So that's on the street to come back to you in July. The other one is the Schuman Center. Those units originally put in in the probably early 90s, well beyond their life cycle, the ones that run the gymnasium themselves, and so we've, we have got money set aside and splashed to do that with the rec budget, and Jimmy's been working close with us on that. David Holton helped us write the mechanical specs, going to change those up just a little bit, the units, and those are in in July. So all those will come to you, they are funded items, so, you know...
Sir, why do you think there were no takers on the, on the complex? What's going on in the industry that's...
So it takes a commercial contractor.
Okay.
It's a large, large unit, it has to be crane lifted in. I think the, the combination of the complex, and you chime in, but the combination of the complexity of the unit that was there was expressed to us, as well as, one of the folks that was really able to do the job, never got a response back, had a tight timeframe, didn't get a response back on a crane price, they're a local vendor, and actually came to us and said, look, I could have, I could have put something on the paper, but I don't want to take you to the bank, I actually want to put what the quote's going to be. And so, you know, we were able to talk back, we extended a little bit there on that time, and I think we'll have a couple of options down there. And I feel free to chime in.
Plus, you know, we expanded the number of vendors that we sent information to some of them.
Yeah, because I thought they were hungry for work.
Well, one thing that's happening now on the market, and I think you had told me this in all this conversation we've had about it, is now they're starting to experience some parts problems with these units, because they're manufactured either overseas...
Overseas.
That have shut down, and so it's getting pretty tough.
Okay, okay.
Those are on the radar, those are some things we're actively working. Next slide, please. Little bit busy slide, actually, Ms. Chairman, you're aware of this, we got a little survey form from ACCG, I put that in y'all's packet, looks like this, it didn't have a heading on it, so I apologize, but if you're interested, if you could take the time to please fill that out about policies and things that ACCG needs to work on, and things in our area that concern us, they're putting together the policy statements, if you can get back, this back to me sometime next week, scan it, drop it off, whatever you want to do, we'll incorporate it as a document that we'll all send to them. I had a call from LCPC this week, you may recall, probably six months ago now, back in the January timeframe, December, January timeframe, you, you looked at an RV ordinance, you looked a couple of times at it, as a matter of fact, and so, there, we never did really adopt it.
We don't, we didn't?
We didn't?
I thought we did.
Ah, there, I don't...
Commissioner Gillis, we didn't know that, man?
I don't, I don't think we ever did. There, there was one on the table, I think what you approved...
We approved the one that...
Was the modification to the PUD to allow that RV park to go in.
Yeah, yeah, South Newport, yeah.
Right, okay.
Couldn't enact this before that and bring it under it.
Mm-hmm.
So the question is, do we want to reconsider it? I tell you, I'll probably just let them set up during their regular meeting next time to do just a very quick overview, to see if you want to consider that.
Okay.
It is something that's needed.
Yeah, I remember that, yeah.
Mr. Martin talked to me this week, wanted to see what your feeling was on starting some registration for some fall programs, specifically football and soccer that are outdoor events. August, last part of July, first part of August is typically the time they do the registration. There's a ramp-up time, obviously, so, so those things usually start late September, first part of October. If you were going to do them, you need, you need to go ahead and really let them start gearing up for the registration as soon as you can. That's something we can obviously think about next week, you got another meeting next week, but I told him I would kind of let y'all know that timeframe would be required. If we get beyond the first part of August too much, trying to do a season of those probably is not applicable.
Well, I probably would like to, excuse them, sir, we hear a, some recommendations from the, from Dr. Davis, and I guess we could compare those with the school system's doing for their sports. I know some local counties have had some exposures and they have started to limit some of their programs, so I'd probably like to hear a recommendation from the guru, our local guru, because we need to be prepared in case, then what do you do?
Correct.
What do you do?
And we do have him tomorrow on the phone.
Yeah.
And it could be, it'd be a great time to say, look, we're wondering, and in fact, we'll have, with Dr. Davis's call, we'll also have, hopefully, Bryan County on there and chat them, and we can kind of shop that if, if that's okay, too, that's a great idea.
I think we all are for the program, it's just a matter of...
Yeah, I'm, I'm, kind of too soon, maybe.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I would just say this, the question is, what is the Liberty County Board of Education plans?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I mean, we're sitting up here tonight talking about wearing masks, now we're going to look at the fall program. I'd like to see the fall program go into progress, but also, we are talking about wearing masks from up here, so let's, I would like to see what the Board of Education is going to also do along with their sports activity.
All right, we can definitely check that.
Well, the CDC has come out with some guidelines for all sports, and it's from mid-year football to high school to college, it's, hadn't been out too long. I mean, it's going to be things like, you know, you go in the locker room, don't share the towel with a fellow that's, and don't...
Right.
Fist bumps, handshakes, and stuff like that, so there's going to be a bunch of things. I'm a little concerned that, I, I know that August 4th, they're talking about trying to go back to school, and, you know, that's, that's one of the things that's going to be keeping kids to leave school, to go to the rec department to play football in the evening, and I just, I don't know what's going to happen out there, I just, maybe somebody else has got more handle on it, but...
We'll, yes, we'll...
We certainly shop it. We, we'll check all those avenues, and I will reach out to, to take, you know, Jimmy and I'll look at the CDC stuff, too.
I think we all, you want to say?
Well, I, you know, when it comes down to it, if you just look at it and say, is it deemed essential? I think all of us do the work on our big jobs, because we aren't essential at all. But Lil' Johnny playing quarterback for the Colts, and his sister, Chad, for it.
Yeah.
He's nothing, he's central about that.
Yeah, yeah, yep.
And so we'll...
Go for it, yeah. I hear you, I hear you, thank you, sir.
We'll do a little exploring and then bring it back, put it on the mid-month next week, if we can make a final decision. You're aware, Ms. Chairman, in fact, we need to get him over here, that we have a new EMS director, Mr. Richard Lambeth, replaced Sean Parker, and you're probably close to 30 days now, three weeks, maybe. As you know, Sean Parker served on the Region 9 EMS Council as your representative, if it's all right, I'd like to put that on the mid-month agenda for y'all, unless you want to do it tonight, to formally take action to appoint Richard Lambeth in his place.
Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Let's go ahead and appoint him.
Everybody's good, somebody make a motion then.
Commissioner Gillis, I shall, I shall.
To appoint Richard Lambeth, the EMS director, to replace Sean Parker on the Region 9 EMS Council.
And who is his pilgrim?
Yes, sir.
Who is he? He's...
He's a new EMS...
New EMS director.
Was already working there?
No, sir, he's actually from Savannah.
They brought him in?
Yeah. Baron, you doing it?
I haven't met him yet, but...
I've met him, down-to-earth guy.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Pretty good guy.
I second that.
Second, all right. All in favor? He is appointed, replace Sean.
I'll come back to the Dangerous Dog Review Board. While we're on appointments, y'all had a note, I sat there, we actually received today, that Ms. Kathy Atkins...
It's a great loss.
Has, has stepped down because of other commitments that she's got, longtime service there, and I think former DeFex employees, so if it's okay, we'll go in and start the advertising for that position.
All right, sir.
To get that out. The Dangerous Dog Act, under the Code Section of Georgia, requires that under certain conditions that happen, that animals be confiscated or picked up, they then have to be rated under that Code Section as whether they qualify as a dangerous dog by the animal control officer of the county. We had an instance that happened, actually, week before last, that unfortunately qualified under two to three criteria, with a bite to a human as well as death of another animal that was in that human's possession. So we made that determination, we sent that to the owner, the owner, under Georgia law, has 10 days to appeal that determination, they've done that, it involves two animals. So your ordinance says that the Animal Control, the Dangerous Dog Review Board would actually meet to look at the circumstances around that, and then either render decision, a final decision, one way or another. We don't have, we don't have a board appointed, what I wanted to see if it'd be okay is if, for the mid-month meeting, maybe I could make some recommendations to you of some folks to serve on that, both from the public and private sector. There's no number specified, if it's okay, I'd like to suggest five to do that, doesn't need to be too large. All the board will do is look at the Code Section, basically, look at the facts that Um, all the board will do is look at the code section, basically, look at the facts that actually happened, and the evidence that was collected, uh, and based on that alone, determine whether it actually qualifies as a dangerous dog. So.
Okay.
Glad to take you through that ordinance, but, uh, not necessary. But, but, you know, if that's okay, I'd like to just recommend some folks to you.
Okay.
Really, if you got anybody, please let me know, and then I can form that list by next week. We have to have the, the hearing within thirty days.
Okay.
Okay. I was with Commissioner Gill not too long ago, and every dog is dangerous.
Snake is a snake.
Especially when you don't know that they ain't got no.
Right. And, and even though the dog was somewhat subdued, he was dragging a very large log chain.
Mm.
We both come to the conclusion that with that big a chain, that was a dangerous.
I mean, TMI. Let me see how Joe's writing that over there.
Um, hey, a couple, a couple of the real quick things that, that, one, one thing is, we're talking about masking. So the, the masking policy went into effect for the employees. Um, that has gone very, very, very well. They're very receptive to that, and we're keeping in mind that the reason you mask is not to protect you, it's to protect others from you in case you've got it and you're asymptomatic.
Mm-hmm.
And so, you know, employees say, well, I, I don't have it. I ought to have the right to whether, to know whether I wanna be protected or not. It's not about protecting you. That's not why you mask.
Right.
So it's, it's about protecting somebody else. So, all that being said, it went very well. Uh, we've had a couple of folks that due to, um, uh, medical conditions, um, could not wear it, and, and our, our, our nicely to say, just produces something from your doctor, uh, that says you have a medical condition that's not, that does not allow you to wear a mask, uh, which is fine. And they've been able to do that, or have been able to wear a face shield instead of a mask, um, whi- which i- is not as good as wearing the mask, but it's better than nothing. So that's going well. That being said, I wanted, keeping in mind that you're masking to protect others, uh, we have a sign at the door that says, please mask. But the city has been successful in, um, requiring it in their buildings, and I'd like to suggest you do that to protect our workforce again from somebody who may be asymptomatic and carrying that virus that comes into our workplace. Uh, we do have masks, not a problem. Um, I'd tell you that probably, from what we see in this building, from what we see in this building, is probably eighty percent or better that come with a mask anyway. They want a mask. Um, it's no problem to provide them one. Uh, Mr. Jones has, has been doing that. I would almost just like to do it in all of our buildings. Um, I think we can do it very cautiously. I don't see a problem with providing them a mask if they come in and, and don't have a mask. Um, and I wanted to see what your feeling was about that.
Ms. Brown, do we have a, like, uh, on that poli- mask policy, do we have, like, a timeline? Or just, we waiting to see what numbers, or is it gonna be continuous, or?
We don't. I mean, we put it in until further notice.
Okay.
And that would be subject to what the commission wants to do. As, as you look at the numbers, as you get reports from Dr. Davis on that, and I would suggest the same thing with the buildings. And I, that, when the city did theirs, they did it just until further notice.
Mm-hmm.
And, and as y'all are staying on top of everything like you are, um, then whenever we decide to change that, or you decide to change that, then we just, we back up.
Okay.
Sure, yeah. Uh, you talk about the board, uh, what, what about the holders, uh, did Mr. Wells?
Mr. Wells did, and we're advertising for that. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Mm-hmm.
I believe we've already started.
Yeah, because somebody approached me. Either they heard it or they read it, one of the two.
I, I know, I know that, uh, right after we got it, I asked Debbie to go ahead and.
Yeah.
So I wanted to see what your, what your thoughts were.
I'm, I'm for it, you know.
I mean, I don't, I don't really see, a- again, um, the, the, the way we would wanna do it wi- with, with education. Um, nobody's gonna be rude to anybody, uh, I think as long as you have a mask there, which will be these masks, um, for the duration of time they'll be there, it's not a problem. But there are some places that they come in contact with that you can't maintain a six-foot distance. Inside the recreation building, we've got plexiglass up, but they, you know, by the time they enter the door, they're, they're eight feet.
Mm-hmm.
And I just think if we're protecting our employees, then again, some people don't know they've got it. They wouldn't want to infect somebody. That's not what they want to do. They simply don't know that they're carrying the disease or carrying the virus.
How many facilities do we actually have plexiglass up at now? All of them?
We, we've put plexiglass up at all of our, uh, counter spaces, everywhere.
Is it, is it the swinging from the ceiling?
It is. It is.
Mm-hmm.
And they also have social distancing requirements in them, too. And if they don't have the pla- if they don't have that type of plexiglass, it's because they already have a counter space. Like the tax assessor's or tax commissioner's office, they already have that glass there. Yes, sir, we did that.
Well, I'm for getting the mask, putting the sign up that says, we strongly encourage you to, you know, put a mask on. I mean, I've got a mask in the truck, but, um, I'm just saying that, you know, that's just gonna be part of the education part of it. And then we've already pretty much put something in place. We encouraging it, and then we can move forward from there. But I, I agree with what Commissioner Gillard said. I believe it's just a matter of time that everybody's gonna have to do it. But I think the warning is already out there, and there's some people paying attention to it, and there's some of them not. But when they come in this building, we want them to pay attention, and then let's, let's, let's move forward. I mean, buy the mask. What, you can get a dollar a piece? Is that what they are?
Yeah, they're not, they're not.
Yeah.
They're, they're.
I'd go ahead and get it and write it off, and just send it to, uh, what's that guy over there?
Ooh.
Where's he at, dog?
Ooh.
Who?
Who?
Ooh. What are you talking about? Oh, 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 Lawton Davis?
Who in China? What's his name?
Oh.
Doctor who?
The one we can't get the HVAC part for.
Well, we'll, so, so just so I'm clear, what we'll do is we'll provide masks.
Mm-hmm. That's, that's fair enough.
And we'll say, pl- please mask us, if you, I mean, that, that's kinda what I'm after, is a sincere, is a sincere, please help us, help you by masking.
And then we'll move forward from there. If it gets to where, you know, this board makes the decision, then it'll be a mandate. I mean, I, I think that you can, you can, you know, here it is today, and the first thing we're gonna do is mandate it. I, I've, I've listened to a lot of people, and, and I agree that, you know, you gotta put one on if you go into a lot of the businesses around here, and I, and I do, but, you know, for us to just tell everybody in Liberty County, well, leave the city limits out there, boy, pull that mask off. So, you know, it's, it's kinda like the seatbelt, you know, Houston have to do that, he's on Fort Stewart, so.
Not, not a doubt, man. And I, and I understand, I, I just hope that, you know, hopefully, that we're trying to get to the point where we won't have to adjust down this, you know, we trying to.
Be the norm.
Trying to fix it, trying to fix it here before we gotta fix it there.
Mm-hmm.
I'm for all masks, all the time.
So the last thing I'll tell you, 'cause I skipped it and I apologize, is the CARES Act. So the CARES Act was passed as part of the stimulus plan, uh, that came out, uh, this past year, uh, by the Congress and signed by the president. Uh, there was, there, there are some monies that have been allocated to states and local governments as part of that. Now, it was allocated to the states, the states decided how to allocate it to the local governments. Uh, we got notice on that this past week. Uh, the amount allocated, if we can expend the funds for it, uh, is around a million dollars, uh, for Liberty County. Some, some cities, uh, got it directly, some of the larger cities, but the apportionment was made by the governor, uh, to, to, uh, Liberty County and all its municipalities. So, um, the, every city in the county also, uh, is projected to get a share. The way that works, though, is that you can draw down your first thirty percent of that money, which roughly is a little over three hundred thousand for certain things. They haven't come out with the exact guidelines for that yet. We know they've gotta be COVID-related, that you've had to do in order to, to attack the virus, so to speak. It could be programs that were established. It could be anything that you had to do to be compliant with CDC and things like that. So we, we have been tracking, uh, Joseph's been working on that, Larry Logan working on that. We've been tracking for some time, countywide, all those expenses in anticipation of this. Um, we can draw that thirty percent down when we get the protocols for doing it. We just have to measure back the expenditures we had in order to be able to keep it all. And then in order to draw down the other seventy, we would have to expend it all, uh, really by the end of the year to do that, which is a challenge for, for a lot of governments. Um, so, but just know that there is some help coming back for some of the expenses, election expenses, uh, PPEs, things that had to be done especially for the elections, uh, probably ballot boxes, probably, I mean, you know, a lot of things that we can reach back. We're gonna get everything we can, uh, back, so that's the good news I'll leave you with.
Mm-hmm.
How much is a truckload of sanitizer?
Actually, actually, uh, looking at pallets of sanitizer, uh, going forward.
Yeah.
Uh, the other, the other thing real quickly is if you wanted to look at your calendars, I think that it's safe to say, we're still waiting on the garage door opener to be installed at Olive White, but it's safe to say that you maybe by, let's say, the last week in August, can schedule ribbon cutting for the Olive White, uh, fire station, if you wanted to try to go ahead and do that.
Do you wanna look at that, Monday or Friday?
Nice.
I'm just, I mean.
That would be the twenty-fourth or the twenty-eighth.
What time?
Whatever time, sir, y'all desire. Early morning. Only done them, I think, at ten.
Nine, nine o'clock.
Nines are early.
Nine, nine o'clock.
Let's do ten, Commissioners.
Nine o'clock.
Yes, it's kind of a, ten's.
Nine o'clock.
Yeah, it is.
On the twenty-eighth?
He must have somewhere to go.
You wanna do the twenty-fourth or twenty, twenty-eighth on a Friday?
Friday.
Friday, Friday.
Which one is that?
That's the Olive White.
Olive White?
Yes, ma'am.
Nine thirty, then.
We won't be long.
Nine thirty.
Keep it around.
Huh?
Keep it around, number.
Yeah, we won't be long.
All right, well.
You need to get out of there?
Won't be long.
Yeah.
Ten o'clock.
People are late.
Ten o'clock.
Thank you, sir.
And sir, that's all I have. I apologize for.
Um, like going to Buck's Outboard.
Lot going on.
Olive White Road, mhm.
Like going by the, um.
Abstortion.
Lay down it, yeah.
Is that all, sir?
Uh.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I hope for the next mid-month meeting that we'll be able to go back and sell that other issue that we had the other day with the, uh, I call it the bribery community fraud.
It, it will be on the agenda, sir.
We'll be able to go back and sell that.
Yeah.
That issue, by then.
Yeah, but, and, and while we're talking, um, I took the Liberty, you know, there's been some discussion all over the country about the, um, uh, monuments, especially Confederate monuments. There's been a little bit of, uh, attention brought to that here in Liberty County, so I've asked our historical cultures committee to take that task on. Uh, Mr. Phil Oldham would chair that committee. He chairs that committee. And to that committee, I've added, um, Ms. Sarah Heinz, a teacher from Lib- a history teacher from Liberty High School, and Ms., I think Rebecca Standard, a teacher from Bradwell, to also serve in that committee, and bring us back some recommendations in the month about, let's see, I think our mid-month meeting in August. I've asked them, that's kind of their umbrella, so I have not given them any mandates. Kelly will give them, well, what's the word? Kelly will brief them with the state law.
Legal overview.
Legal overview, so they'll know what their, um, ramifications are, like, the, the, the boundaries are, then they'll bring back. So Ms. Ms. Levitt, you'll be hearing from Phil Oldham pretty soon about, he said y'all hadn't been meeting, but he's gonna do a, he's gonna, but he's gonna, you, you'll meet before that time now. He's gonna call a special meeting before, mhm, yeah, yeah, 'cause I have to, y'all to report mid-month in August.
What?
For July, yes, sir.
Yeah, for July, mhm.
The sixteenth?
O- o- one of those months.
Ooh.
We'll bounce right back.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
Okay.
It's just the month.
Oh, yes.
All right, I'll forget it of the order.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, one other thing, we, some of us had discussed the issue with you, and we would like to see when can we sit down and talk about it again?
I'm blanking out.
We'll talk about it after.
Okay. Okay.
I actually did a little research on that today, so.
Uh-oh, y'all got it. Okay, we'll talk, all right, we'll talk, okay, all right, all right. Chairman, take a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Second, all in favor?
Ah.
Thank you. Good meeting.
Good meeting.
Good meeting.